Good evening, everyone. The April fourteenth Policy Monitoring Workshop Meeting is now called to order. I know that we may have a couple of colleagues who are making their way back to the room, but I'm going to go ahead and ask the Board Secretary to begin to take the roll.
Mr. Barca?
Present.
Ms. Cortez? Mr. Hogan? Dr. Jones?
Present.
Ms. Manser?
Here.
Mr. Wasserstrom? Ms. Wolfsee?
Here.
All right. Thank you, everyone. We're very glad to have you this evening. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda for this evening. So be in order to receive a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. This will be a roll call vote. The Secretary will please call the roll.
Mr. Barca?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan? Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Manser?
Yes.
Mr. Wasserstrom?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. I will now turn the agenda over to Dr. Mark Bedell for the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We're ready to get started here. We have a couple of items on the Superintendent's Report today. One will be the reopening of schools update. And we want to provide all the reports to the new students to some of the school update. And we're going to have to do it this evening. And so, as the school is about to begin, we need to draw a shot at the education. Um, one point is social emotional health, you know, being, and you will, and you have a good possibility. So let's go ahead and review everybody on the open door. We love the schools. I think many of our family members have been pretty excited at the fact that we have started teaching twins. Um, oh, because it was on. Yeah. It was on. So the second somebody presses it, it goes off. So, um, so we are excited about this update here that we're going to give you all around the reopening of schools and where we are in our progress. We have brought our kids back. I want to say March fifteenth was the first date, and we begin to phase students in over a four-week period because of spring break. Otherwise, it would have been over a three-week period. Our high schoolers and many of our eighth and then tenth through twelfth graders came back on April fifth. So our students have now been in session on a hybrid model since March fifteenth. And what we want to share with everybody is that it's gone extremely well. We haven't had any major incidents, and I have Nurse Grimes here. I think Sarah Williams is here somewhere in the back. And these are our officers, should we say, around COVID compliance. And I think our students have done a wonderful job. If you've gone to any of our schools and visited, they are wearing their masks, they are following and adhering to the guidelines that have been put in place. Our teachers have done a phenomenal job. And quite frankly, as I've been going and visiting campuses, I've been actually pushed by a number of teachers, students, and building administrators as to when are we going to be able to have all of our kids back 100%. And one of the things we wanted to do was to make sure that we had given everybody the opportunity to receive their set of shots. Our district has done that. April eighth, I believe, was the last day that we had a massive amount of people that came to receive their vaccination to the tune of about 500 or so. But prior to that, there were a number of our adults on our school sites that had already received their second doses of shots. And so we think as a school district, based on some of the survey data, we're probably around 80% to 82 or somewhere in that range of our faculty and staff members that have received their vaccinations. And while we hear from Dr. Fauci that the CDC is looking at 80 to 90%, we keep hearing that, of course, people want to see that it's at a higher rate in order to accomplish herd immunity. We do feel that, based on what we have received preliminarily around herd immunity, our school district is well on our way to that if we have not hit that threshold at this point. And so what does that mean? We're currently in the process now of making adjustments as needed to move forward with a full return. We are currently in the orange zone, but as you know, the CDC has made recommendations that we can move from six feet to three feet. And giving the size of our schools in terms of student enrollment, the size of our classrooms at many of our primary schools, we believe that we have an opportunity here to bring back, in particular, pre-K through six, all of our students in a capacity at 100%. We are targeting May third. I don't know if we need to move to the next slide on that. But we are targeting May third. And I think, as you've heard a lot about some of the concerns that are coming from some of our parents about where the school district is in relation to other school districts in this area, you all see on this slide, there are a number of charter schools that are in a blended model just like us. Most of the charter schools opened up around the same time that we opened up, and we have detailed information that we are right on par with most of our competitors here inside of our boundaries. And so as we now move forward into this consideration for May third, pre-K six looks like at this point, we should be able to do that and do that successfully. But grade seven through twelve, we're going to look at that school by school. We believe that there are going to be schools where many of us are going to have to remain in a hybrid model because it is just not possible with the number of students in those schools and in those sections that we're going to be able, even with three feet, to be able to have 100% of the students in there at the same time. We also are aware that at the high school level, when you look at variants and some of the data that's coming out now, that is something that's becoming a little bit more problematic at the secondary level. So many of our charter counterparts, and there's a number of districts that surround us, that are still operating almost on a hybrid model at the secondary level because of the spacing concerns. And so KCPS will continue to look at that and monitor. And in the cases where we are able to do 100%, I think as a school district, we have to make that determination. We don't necessarily want to take a cookie cutter approach to everything. If we have space available and we can bring them in 100% of the time, and we know that that's what our administrators and teachers want and our students want, I think the school district has a responsibility to make that happen. And so we're going to continue to work on that. We wanted to update the board tonight because, as you all know, we will always stay in continuous conversation with our bargaining units. That's important, that we are aligned in all of this. And so we are continuing to work with them in the conversation. I've already shared with Andrea Flinders a while ago that I was looking at May third as a target date, given that that window would have closed for the vaccinations. And we all think that that's a fair process. It will give us another two weeks, especially at the secondary level, for us to make sure that we're able to check, conduct checks and balances on the systems, and that we have these systems working so that when we do come back 100%, we won't have any hiccups and won't find ourselves in a situation where we're having to go back into a hybrid model because of the intentionality. And so we will begin to put this information out to our community. Detailed plans and the communication is in process. That will be posted to our website. But I do want our community to know that we are committed to doing everything in our power to get back to 100% to the best of our ability. If CDC guidelines shift any as it pertains to those secondary schools and we are then able to bring them back 100%, I think those two ladies back there will tell us we have the green light to do so. But I can tell you as a parent, I'm ready for my daughter to be in five days. I've been ready for my daughter to be back since this pandemic hit. And I've shared this with many people. I'm not exempt to what other parents have had to deal with. I have had to bring my daughter in this office, like some of our teachers, and sit your butt down and do your work. And I think these kids are ready to be back in front of their teachers. And so I just want you all to know, we have operated with a lot of safety and concern. And because of how we've done this, we have a high percentage of our teachers coming back. I shared this before, that if this state takes a blow with 2% of their teachers or more leaving, there will be a number of school districts that are in significant trouble because we don't have the teachers in the pipeline, and we definitely do not pay enough for teachers to stay in this state and want to come into this state from other states as people are resigning. And so I think, I really do want to show my appreciation to this board for working with us and being supportive, and most importantly, to the community. You guys have operated with a lot of grace, and we're now seeing the end of that tunnel. And we will continue to do our part. We will continue to operate with grace as we work with our students. And I look forward to updating you all on what grace will look like for our students, given some of the scenarios that we're learning as they have returned from a graduation rate requirement or even from a signature school standpoint, as we're working with all of our schools. We will operate with grace, and I want to leave it at that because I'll give you all more updated details within the next week or so. Any questions?
Good to hear. Okay. Ms. Cortez?
Dr. Bedell, thank you for that. I think it's very positive news. If you, could you give our families, our pre-K to six families, a sense of when that May third date will be definitive?
Ms. Waichu, I guess here's probably more of my question is just around our bargaining units. I know we've been talking with them. I think I want to make sure we have that check mark, that we're good to go. And I don't.
We're actually getting that conversation. It's been a week.
So that, so once we have that conversation, because as I've said, what's worked well for us is being hand in hand with our bargaining units and not being at odds. And I've shared this with Andrea Flinders, and I think they've heard it from a lot of folks. I don't anticipate us having issues around that May third date, but we do want to make sure we get through that piece. And once we have that meeting, we'll be ready to put communication out. So that can happen as early as Friday or maybe even as late as Monday or Tuesday of next week, I believe.
Great.
Thank you for giving a frank look at that.
Thank you. Am I right on that, though? Just making sure? Okay.
And Dr. Jones?
No, I've decided I'll back.
Dr. Jones, go ahead.
Yes, I wanted to know, what is the sense of concerns that teachers continue to have at this point, especially after the vaccination process is, you know, at least underway for most, for many people? Do people still have concerns about the environment, or do they have concerns about class size? Or I'm just trying to get a sense of where any lingering hesitation might stem from.
So to be honest with you, I may have visited, I don't know, maybe 20 of the 35 campuses, and I've been in a number of classrooms, and maybe I just don't hear it. But the vast majority of what I'm hearing is, hey, Dr. Bedell, when can we get the rest of these kids back in? Honestly, I think even in my conversation with Andrea Flinders, she hasn't been receiving anything that is, like, given us concern that teachers are worried about the systems and the protocols that we have in place. I think most teachers have been thankful of just our thoughtfulness and making sure that all of those pieces were in place. And I think anxiety has dropped significantly. I was probably at about 150%, and it may have dropped down to 50% or so now. But I just simply have not been receiving emails or ask the superintendent, I just haven't been receiving a bunch of concerns around how we are bringing everybody back at this point. Now, I do have staff here that's been going in and visiting schools. Dr. Jackson is in here. If you guys have been hearing anything that might be good for the greater good of this organ, for the board and the community, I think now would be a good time to share that with them. That's a great question.
Outside of when can we have them back? There's been a lot of conversation with our teachers and certainly our principals. And we have some secondary schools who are looking at that six feet of social distancing and saying, can I bring them back even with this mandate that we have with the six feet of social distancing, masking, and social mitigating of those factors? And so there is certainly a desire for students to come back. And I have not, again, had many conversations that were anti or even discomfort with bringing students back. As long as we are doing what we need to do for safety purposes, our staff on the, at the campuses are requesting that. So very positive so far.
Dr. Jones has a follow-up.
One more piece, I'm sorry. And that's the part of, a few studies have come out just about sort of hygiene theater and this idea that deep cleaning has to be done, and, you know, everything has to be sanitized all the time. And they have come out definitively to say that very little transmission, if any, comes about from surfaces. And so just wondering what implications that might have on the time and between cohorts and all of that that we might have going on, as well as maybe even some costs looking forward. Because I know that cleaning costs and deep cleaning and sanitizing was a big part of our budget for the prior months.
And I guess what we'll end up doing is having our conversation with Lizelle about that. I mean, part of the reason why we talked about, as a team, bringing everybody back five days is because of some of which you just shared with us, realizing that, you know, as long as we're doing our normal cleaning procedures, we should be fine here. And so even as we think about this return back to five days a week, we said five days a week. We do not believe that we need to have that Wednesday off because there is no need to conduct the deep cleaning. As long as we're doing the cleaning every single day, we should be fine based on these updates from the CDC.
Mr. Barca?
Yeah, one follow-up to that, and it might be a question for Linda or Dr. Jones. In terms of the air quality, does that, has there been any efforts there or modifications that we've made with our HVAC systems? I know there's a bunch of different products out there. I just wanted to know if that was something that is also being monitored and is still a priority for us.
Yeah, we've continued to use our MERV-13 and higher filtration and increase the rates of changing out those filters. We've also purchased and added additional purchases with this expectation to come back fuller with the room air cleaners for the spaces that are a little smaller and maybe don't have outdoor fresh air coming in at a regular basis. So we're kind of upping the game, working with our engineer from our environmental engineering firm right now to make sure that we're ready for that.
Are those extra filters causing any issues with the maintenance of our machines and equipment? I mean, I understand there's some offset of the better the filter, the harder the machine's working to pass air through.
Yeah, we've had a few that have shut down on us. And so we're just trying to be really responsive to turning around that maintenance on those so that we keep them running.
Dr. Bedell, one of my questions is, and if you said it in your remarks, I apologize for missing it. Now we know that adolescents can be vaccinated starting at age 16. I know that you have launched adolescent vaccination. Can you say a little bit more about where we are in that process and how widespread or comprehensive it might be?
You want to come up and update Lauren on where we are? I know that both of you, Lauren and Sarah, have been having conversations with our health partners around this vaccination piece for 16-year-olds and up?
For students. I'm sorry, I couldn't hear very well in the back, so I kind of missed the question. But I just met with Children's.
Move closer to the microphone, please.
Children's Mercy today, and we are going to start, we're hoping for April 22nd, to start vaccinating at the high schools, that Children's Mercy will come into the high schools and vaccinate every child that consent, 16 and up. So that'll be like, we're going to the big high schools. I know there's a lot of little ones, but.
But you'll.
And we'll do it two days a week so that we get the A, because this will be before, if we come back, it'll be before we come back. So we'll do a group, you know, one day, and then the B group on the end of the week. And we'll be doing approximately two schools a day when we do them, and we'll hope to be finished by April 30th. And it'll be the Pfizer because that's the only one approved for 16 and older. And then they'll come back three weeks later to give the rest of the vaccines.
That's wonderful. So basically, we're, you're making the effort to get to every single one of our high schools. Fantastic.
I think the big thing is, to what Nurse Grimes said, is the consenting piece. Like, we have to make sure that, parents have to give that consent for 16, 17-year-olds and then 18-year-olds and up. I mean, I guess they can make that decision on their own. And so we just received an update on this initiative today. And so Ms. Waichu and team will work to get that information out to our parents, that this will be available and on the dates and all of that. And so the more students that we can also get vaccinated, I mean, maybe it becomes a game changer around what we can do at our secondary schools. And we'll work with the Health Department and everybody else once they get the vaccinations.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Kind of along those lines. I know a number of 18-year-old students have actually gotten vaccinated on their own. How do they communicate that to, you know how you usually bring your immunizations to the nurse's office? I mean, do they need to let you guys know that they're vaccinated? I mean.
If you're 18?
Yeah.
Yes.
Or even under.
They can sign for themselves.
Well, some parents I know have also had their 16-year-olds also vaccinated. So I'm just curious, if parents already have done this, what's the protocol that you want us to let you know, you know, that their children are vaccinated? Do they just let the nurse know?
I'm sorry, do they what?
So if a parent, if their children, 16 and above, have already received the vaccination, how do they let the school know that is the case? Do you want them to let the nurses know? Is it the card? Are we eventually going to track this, I guess is what I'm asking, inside the system?
So we, so let's bring the legal person in on that. Ultimately, ultimately, I think eventually it will be a yes.
Yeah, let's do it with our immunizations.
Exactly. So I think very similar to that, but I can't, I was just showing you, well, bring this so we can make a copy of it, and then we will have it. But go ahead.
Thanks, Dr. Bedell. I hope you have noticed my shirt this evening. We're in full mode here, Nurse Grimes and I, and just wanted to let you know, Board Member Wolfsee, that at this time, it's really viewed more like the flu vaccine at this time than it is a shot that's recommended by the state of Missouri for vaccine. So, but we're going to be monitoring that closely because I think things will change. It's just really going to depend on the situation of the pandemic, right? So we're just going to be consistently monitoring and making sure that we're doing our part to make sure that kids are vaccinated. And, you know, we'll give them stickers and we'll do the whole thing. The biggest thing for us is the education piece with parents and with students around the vaccine, giving them the information, giving it to them in a pressure-free way. But I can tell you that that is going to be the game changer that will keep us in school, is to have everyone vaccinated. Because that's the closer we are to herd immunity, the more vaccination we have, then the less the variants come into play. That's going to close us back down again. So we really want to make sure that we're giving every opportunity for vaccine to our staff, to our kids, and to our community. So Lauren and I are working very hard on that right now. So thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Dr. Bedell, I think we may be ready for the next item.
All right. Thank you, ladies. Thank you for coming in and have a wonderful night. So our next presentation will be our summer school update, which I'm really excited about. I think Dr. Darryl Davis and Dr. Fitzgerald will work together on this presentation. And as I've said earlier, I believe that if we pull this off, like I know we will, we hopefully will be able to hook and get some parents to say, we need to enroll our kids into this school district. So I'll pass this over to you, Dr. Davis.
All right. Good evening, Superintendent Bedell, Board Chair Manser, members of the board. I too share Dr. Bedell's enthusiasm and excitement about this summer and 2021. We know with students having been out of a structured classroom for more than a year, everyone is really excited to get back to that structured learning environment along with the peer-to-peer interaction, those full benefits that we have so been used to in previous summers. But we need that more this summer than ever before. Joining me this evening will be Dr. Fitzgerald, and we will begin. So this summer, we do not want it to be business as usual. We have worked hard to prepare a summer program that is not only centered on academically-focused instruction, improvement in math and science and reading, but also is going to be project-based. We will have service learning projects. We will also, you'll hear more about the real-world learning opportunities, which include internships and shadowships. And then also, we are intentional about providing the very necessary SEL supports. So this past year has been difficult on all of us, but more especially the most vulnerable among us, which are our students. And so each school will have social emotional supports this summer. We'll share more about that. So when we talk about or take a look at our recruitment, we wanted to be intentional this year to make sure that we are balancing student performance throughout the year with the grace that Dr. Bedell mentioned previously, to make sure that we're balancing that performance with also looking at the very necessary supports that students hopefully did receive, but then also any supports that they did not have access to this year. And so we're looking at, and I have some friends back there that's going to take us out to a Google form so we can see this print. But as our counselors in the schools are identifying students for possible retention, as they scroll down, you'll see that a problem-solving team has been created at each of the summer school sites. And as you keep going down, counselors will complete this form. They will recommend each student, you can keep scrolling. Okay. All right. So, yeah, keep scrolling a little faster. Okay, all right. So the students' information will be put in. Just keep on scrolling. All right. Keep on going. All right. So then we'll make sure that we identify if the student has an IAP, a 504 plan, if there's any medical needs that the student may have through the summer. If you can pause right here. So there are students that we are targeting and focusing on, students who, per our grading policy, may have had three or more failing grades at the elementary level or two or more failing grades at the middle school level, where those students will receive, those parents will receive communication that will indicate that your student needs to come and successfully complete summer school in order to be promoted. There will be ample supports for those students. We also have our extended school year students. Those are students who have goals written into their IAPs where we believe there will be a substantial loss in the summer if they do not attend. So we'll have programming for those students, as well as our language services department are identifying those students, those new Americans that could benefit from coming to summer school. So those registrations are currently working. And then we also have our Senate Bill 319 students, per Missouri law, any student going into the fourth grade that are two or more years behind in reading, those students will also be targeted. So we have students where it's mandatory, but we're also suggesting that a wide range of students come. We believe that every student can benefit from summer school. And we know as teachers, even if we go home for winter break, when we come back two weeks later, we oftentimes have to remind students of the previous lesson. Oh, yeah, I forgot about that. Can you remind me? Well, in a two-and-a-half-month break in the summer, we know that that learning loss could be even more substantial. That learning loss typically is referred to as the summer slip or the summer slide, but now there's a new term out there, the COVID slide. And so researchers are anticipating that this year, if a student does not attend summer school, they may only retain about 70% of the information they would in a typical year. So it's important that we serve as many students as possible. If you can keep scrolling. So that's the criteria that the counselors will put in there so that as we're, as we're building out our enrollment, we know exactly which students will need additional support versus those that are there for enrichment. You can keep going and just keep scrolling all the way to the bottom. All right. So that's the process that counselors are using right now in our building. And then they will also include backup data so that it's not just about the grade, but do we also have their I-ready scores, their pre-post assessments, so that we can provide that individualized support and intervention throughout the summer. All right. So we have increased the number of sites because we do anticipate the increase in enrollment. So we're projecting summer school at around 7,400 students this summer. You see, it's broken. You see it's broken down, we'll have several slides for, uh, sites as well as those projections. There's teacher projections on there if you need that. Uh, we also have, in parentheses, the other schools that will feed into that program. So for example, summer school will be held at James, but that will include Gladstone and Garfield students. Uh, Melcher will include Faxton and Knott's, et cetera. And so, uh, I do want to say that, so you, well, let me go back. That was the, uh, elementary sites. Even though we're planning for face to face instruction, we know that every family, it, you know, may not be, uh, prepared for that. And so we do not want to deny access. So, uh, the KCVA will be open and available this summer so that, uh, all students have access to summer learning. Uh, these are secondary. Also would like to point out, is someone else controlling this? Okay. Also would like to point out that we use the summer session to build capacity in our leaders. So we have identified two current vice principals who are serving as summer school coordinators this summer. And, uh, we're working with them and building their capacity to look at systems district wide to coordinate all of the, uh, departments that contribute to summer school. Also, uh, we have vice principals serving as principals for the summer. And, uh, then we also have some, um, KC plus residents who are current instructional coaches who will be working as administrators for the summer. And then lastly, yeah, I'm not even touching this, somebody's turning this, okay, lastly, we have summer, what is going on? Okay, okay. Yeah, who who's doing that, Brian?
Me, the man behind the curtain, I'm sorry. It was, it got switched off and it should never be switched off. Sorry about that.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right. So the school day, and I may have missed a slide in there somewhere. Uh, the school day will, uh, the student day will include six hours of learning, the staff day at seven hours. We have extended or expanded summer school from four weeks to five weeks this year. And, uh, we again, uh, with with, well, we'll hear from Dr. Fitzgerald as to what the learning will look like throughout that six hour day. We also are excited to partner with a number, uh, of agencies and organizations throughout the community. Alvin Ailey will continue his dance instruction located at the Cell Academy. Will will still continue to partner with the Boys and Girls Club. They will serve grades K through eight at their Wagner and Thornberry sites. We do have a, uh, firm partnership with Lead to Read. They have reading mentors that are going to go into two elementary sites, uh, to read with, uh, young students, grades, uh, first through third grade, I believe. And then we will continue our partnership with Link to provide before and after school care beginning at seven o'clock AM and then running until six o'clock PM. Also, we have a meeting tomorrow with the Nelson Atkins Museum, and we will finalize additional partnerships to make this not only fun, uh, but also focused on learning in a multitude of ways. All right, next up, I will turn this over to Dr. Fitzgerald, who will take us through our curriculum and assessment.
Thank you. Good evening, board, Board Chair, Dr. Bedell and community. Is every assistant superintendent curriculum instructions dream to have a superintendent say, we want an awesome summer program, go. And so we have had a ball putting this, uh, together. I'm very excited to talk with you today about it. Can you hear me okay? All right. Um, so when we're looking at our summer school curriculum, we wanted to make sure we had the high leverage standards identified. We want this to be about accelerating learning for our students. We are fully aware that they are going to be coming with different experiences for the past year. We don't want to be looking at learning loss. We want to be looking at how are we accelerating learning for every one of our students? We still need to be getting our students to our grade level standards. How did we identify those high leverage standards? We're already ahead of the game there too because we have interim assessments. Our coordinators for curriculum instruction professional development have identified our high leverage standards. We use those in our interim assessments. Those will be the standards our students will make sure that they have access to this summer during summer school. They are standards, um, that align with the DUSI blueprint as well. They in reading, it's going to be very much about the reading process. You'll see reading fluency at our K, uh, one, two. We need to make sure our kids can learn how to read at first. Um, you'll also see determining main idea, key details, all of that when they get, um, through our literacy. In our math, you'll see a lot of fluency. You will see numbers and operations, um, in base ten. Uh, you'll see a lot of asking students to become fluent, um, in numeracy. So literacy and numeracy is our focus for our summer school. While we also have our science, um, our students will also have access to science. Um, we will be following our KCPS curriculum. Uh, we are not redesigning a whole new curriculum for our summer school. We're just compacting it to make it appropriate to help, again, for our kids to accelerate learning. And we will be using proficiency scales. You'll hear much more about those in the coming year. We've purchased some proficiency scales through the work of a, uh, world renowned educator researcher, Bob Marzano. And we are going to be using those proficiency scales to help us determine exactly where each student is accessing the curriculum so that instruction for each student can begin exactly where each student needs it. Uh, additionally, we will have pre and post, uh, assessments. We always want to know where our students are. We are a data driven district. We have to know where our students are towards proficiency of the standard. So again, we can start instruction for kids there. Uh, those pre and post assessments will be through our illuminate platform. We've been working with the assessment department. And, um, we will also use it, which I'll get to another slide, on program evaluation. We absolutely want to make sure that we evaluate our summer school so we continue to offer the most robust summer school around. And the courses that our kids will be taking in K eight. Every student in K eight will have a literacy course, a math course, science, social studies and physical education. And our K six kids will also have iSpark. In ninth through twelfth grade, it's slightly different because of graduation requirements and credits and having to recover or attain credits. So students in nine, twelve will have the opportunity to recover or attain credits through Odysseyware. But we don't want a computer program to determine our children's fate. So we have our, um, coordinators, some, I always want to say acronyms. CIPD stands for curriculum instruction professional development. Our curriculum coordinators are identifying appropriate courses for our students to take through Odysseyware. Now, this is where it gets exciting, although that is exciting, right? Curriculum is always exciting, especially for me. But we are going to offer amazing internship opportunities for our students. So on these two slides, I'm not going to read these slides to you. I wanted to give you the opportunity to see some of the internships. I know, uh, Chris McNeil, our director for C, uh, career and technical education, has worked diligently to make sure our students have opportunities, uh, to these summer internships. And some of them will extend beyond summer. Really want to make sure our students have that opportunity for the real world learning. You can see that our own school leadership department and facilities department is also offering internships to our students. And then what does this mean for our K eight students? This is where we were thinking really out of the box. And we're going to be bringing some service learning and community activism opportunities for our students. We're very excited about this. This will be two hours every day. It depends, it might be in the morning for some kids and the afternoon for others. It all depends on scheduling and having to think through that. Every, only kindergarten, they do not have a a choice in kindergarten. All kindergarten students will be doing kindness about spreading kindness. But every other sets of grades, first and second, when students enroll, they will get to choose which service learning, community activism project they would like to participate in. They have, so an example, first and second grade, the choices are reduce, reuse, recycle and planting trees and building birdhouses. Also going to be purchasing T-shirts for the students, colored T-shirts. So if you are in the reduce, reuse, recycle course class, you might be wearing a green T-shirt. And what's exciting to that SEL component, I could be in one classroom and see a student in second grade, an older student than me, in a green shirt. And I'm going to feel connected to that student, even though we're not in the same classroom. So really giving that that, um, the feeling of belongingness within the the buildings. Um, I've also given you here the outcomes. Each of these, again, it's twenty five days, so on days twenty four and twenty five, no, I don't think it's, it's five weeks, it is twenty four days, I'm sorry, twenty three and twenty four days, um, will be having outcome presentations, like the entrepreneurship might do a shark tank. Students would come and present their innovation and do a shark tank type activity. So you can see here what the outcomes are for each of those service learning, community activism, um, projects that our students will be engaging in. The coordinators from curriculum instruction professional development put together the options and the outcomes. But our teachers right now applied and are currently preparing these courses to prepare, uh, to present to our students. So we need to have some professional learning for our teachers. So on June sixteenth, all of our summer school teachers will participate in a day long professional learning with members from the district staff. So we will talk about curriculum and instructional design, about those high leverage standards, about how, what the compacted curriculum looks like, give teachers an opportunity to to design instruction. They'll get some work on the proficiency scales because that is new work for the district. And we want to make sure they understand how to use those proficiency scales. They'll dig deeper into their service learning projects because they may not be the teacher who designed it. So it may be another teacher who designed the proficient, uh, the the service learning project, but a different teacher is going to be presenting it to the students. And then there'll be a need for some technology. We are switching our student information system so they will need to understand the conversion from Tyler to Infinite Campus, how do I do attendance, how do I, uh, report grades? So there will be some technology work on that day. June seventeenth, they will spend half a day with their, um, summer school principal at their building. And then they will spend half of a day, uh, getting their classroom ready for summer school. So anytime we have a program like summer school, we want to make sure we evaluate its effectiveness. And so the way we're going to evaluate our effectiveness of our summer school is we will have those pre and post assessments so we can definitely have some, um, quantitative data if our students are growing and learning under our program. Our, um, principals and assistant principals will conduct walkthroughs. That's when you go and you visit a classroom for about anywhere from ten to twenty minutes, depending on your purpose, to see our kids learning, what does this look like? What is the environment in terms of, or what does it look like? What are the look fours in terms of environment, student and teachers? And are the, is that what we're seeing in the classrooms? There will be five completed per week, per administrator. And then we also like that qualitative data. Our clients are people, and so we need to talk to them. And so we will be doing some surveys of our teachers and our students to understand their, um, approval or what they were concerned about in terms of their experiences in summer school.
Thank you, got this slide.
All right, thank you. So as we, uh, firm up, there are just a few remaining tasks that we have to finalize our, uh, preview of summer school. So we will be working with the communications department. The excitement that you heard this evening, we know we will have a fun and exciting and a very, uh, deep learning experience for students. So communications will, uh, push that out to families to encourage students to come. We also have included an incentive. So this summer, students who miss no more than seven hours of a, or or one day of summer school will earn a one hundred dollar gift card. Uh, that is for grades K through eight. For high school students, they will get fifty dollars per half credit earned. So they can earn one hundred dollars if they complete a full credit. Also, we're working to finalize transportation that is dependent upon our course request, but that will come in the, uh, coming weeks and we'll get those transportation letters out. And then we'll, we're working to finalize those summer school partnerships. And we should have that wrapped up by middle of next week. But we, uh, look forward to coming back to you in the future with another update on the, uh, success of summer school twenty twenty one. And we'll open it up for any questions that you may have.
You so much. Um, I'm looking at colleagues, um, to see, Dr. Bedell, I think you wanted to speak.
Okay.
Yeah, I just, um, I know before the board makes their, uh, add their comments or thoughts or remarks, um, yeah, I I do want to say thank you all. I did approach you all and said, listen, I do not want a boring summer school model. And I do not want kids checking out on us because they've had a hard year. You know, part of of what you've seen in the curriculum piece is a lot of it is because of what what we're seeing in our community. So I'll just give you an example of where the ideal came from. On my phone, um, I visited Lincoln Middle two weeks ago. And I got out of that, of the car because I had seen all of the dumping that's happening right down the street. Like it's, it's horrific. If you all were to just see this and to think about kids who may live in those apartments that have to walk up that street and and the sidewalks, the trees are growing out of it. You mean, it's just terrible. And so wanting to begin to teach our students how to solve real community problems and how to begin to advocate to elected officials to demand better for their communities. And so a lot of what you're seeing is we're beginning to build a foundation and beginning to help teach our kids how to work in a collaborative manner, how to solve problems, how to do it in an interdisciplinary manner. Because all of this that they're going to be doing, while it's engaging, it also ties into many of those standards that we'll be focusing on with these students throughout the summer, but just around life skill development. And so to see, um, what you all have put together in a short period of time, I'm very pleased. And I think for me, uh, the the proof is always going to be in the pudding when folks come and see this in action during the summer. And so I'm looking forward to us continuing to flesh this out. But I think we're going to have something very robust here that I hope could be the transitioning into a whole new way that we do summer school moving forward.
Thank you, Dr. Bedell. Uh, Mr. Barca.
Yeah, I I commend Dr. Bedell, the team for putting such an amazing program together. I was just, I had a question that I had circled and highlighted, and then I read underneath some of these slides, the paid internships opportunities here for our kids. So I think that's incredible and even within our own district. I know my colleague Nate Hogan would probably bring that up as something that, um, he would love, he loves to see. Uh, I guess the question that I have is around, um, the service learning and community activism component. Is it, am I seeing this correct? Is that the high school students are using the internship path versus this? Or is there another, uh, I guess installment for the high school folks?
Right, no, that's that's correct. The, it's it's for our K eight students. The high school kids have access to the internships.
Okay.
Um, Dr. Jones, go ahead.
If I, if I could add, in addition to the internships that you saw on the slides, we also have, uh, partnerships. We're working with Higher KC. There are a couple of hundred, uh, internships available through that partnership. And we have a meeting with the FEC tomorrow. So there will be, uh, additional opportunities that will be in a future, uh, update.
Thank you. That was actually what I was about to talk about is Higher KC with the city. Um, and I, I deal with a mentee who's a high schooler now, and she hadn't heard about it. And so I know that as you guys kick up your communications, they'll find out. But there is a deadline within the next two weeks of students to apply. So the communications do have to kind of, um, accelerate for students to do that.
Yes, thank you for that. I think the, uh, distance learning, it it has slowed the communication to, uh, students. But I I think the May third return will help with that. Counselors do have the information. I spoke with Crystal Everett the other day, and so I believe the information has been sent to schools. It, uh, we'll, 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 uh, speed it up and get, make sure students are aware of that deadline.
I have a question, and it's, I think it's primarily just around the marketing piece. I believe you've already put some information out, correct, about, uh, summer school? So students can, families can be already enrolling their child, is that correct? No.
So, uh, thus far, I believe the dates have been announced and that, uh, summer school is coming. We are, now, teachers are able to apply. That is out there posted live already. And I'm sorry, if I could interject and add, uh, that, uh, Dr. Bedell also, uh, pushed for, uh, an incentive for teachers. So in, uh, previous summers, we have paid twenty five dollars for teachers with ba- bachelor's degrees and thirty five dollars per hour for teachers with master's degrees. This summer, we, one summer only, we will, uh, pay teachers hourly rate of pay to really encourage and incentivize, uh, teachers to come in. So with the expanded number of students, we will need more teachers to sign up. And so, uh, that is already out there. For the question regarding the student application, we are scheduled to hopefully go live on Monday, uh, the nineteenth with that. And I believe that will be finalized by Friday. I'm looking at my, my friend over here, uh, uh, Mr. Rand. So we will have that. So we will have that, uh, up by end of day on Monday.
That's great. So I'm already hearing parents ask, what about summer school? When are we going to know? When's it going to be announced? So, and I'm sure my parent colleagues are hearing those kinds of things in the community. So sooner better. All right, any other questions? Ms. Cortez?
So it's exciting to me to hear you talk about accelerating learning. It also sounds like we're accelerating teaching, um, with kind of the, the, the institution of a new curricular idea and implementation in a very short order. Will there be opportunities for professional learning across sites since they're teaching new curricula?
Absolutely. And you know, we're now masterful at teams meetings and can now get to, uh, do virtual meetings and not have to travel. So yes, we can certainly offer some opportunities. Of course, there'll be a lot of professional learning over the summer for teachers that are not teaching summer school and for our administrators this summer about, um, interim assessments which we have, the proficiency scales, yes, a lot of that work will occur during the summer.
I guess I really was asking about kind of the real-time learning for your teachers in these, in these project-based learning curricula, um, since you'll have six or eight sites where you've got students doing maybe different iterations.
Yeah, so absolutely there too. We can hook up, you know, the teams, they can meet each other virtually during the class time. Absolutely, we can, um, allow that opportunity with teams. It's a great idea.
Dr. Bedell, I think we're back to you.
Before we close out, I would like to acknowledge, uh, several other colleagues that contributed content to, uh, tonight's presentation. Uh, we do have the two summer school coordinators and, uh, Dr. Angela Sharp as well as Mr. Anthony Holland. And then we have our curriculum lead person, uh, Ms. Jessica Powers, and then also Dr. Jermaine Wilson, uh, contributed content as well. So just wanted to acknowledge them. All right, thank you all.
Thank you.
I know as they are exiting out, I do want to make sure that, um, everybody listening know that the, uh, five extra days, the incentive cards, um, the higher rate of pay is being covered with SRT2 funds, so it doesn't take a hit on our general budget. And so at this time, for our last presentation for the day, we'll bring Dr. Woodley up. I think the board has heard from Dr. Woodley. I feel like this is about your third time here in, in, during this second semester, so.
Exactly, I'm a regular.
So I think we're ready to give the board an update on, on where we are with, uh, 1.3 students' social, emotional health and wellbeing. And so we'll pass it over to you.
Well, good afternoon, Dr. Bedell, Board Chair Mansour, members of the board. It's always a pleasure to come and talk about the great work that we're doing in the Division of Student Support Services. Um, the Division of Student Support Services come, um, compo-, is composed of 10 different departments. Uh, but tonight, we're going to focus our conversation about the work that's being done with our Behavioral Health Department. And so we have a wonderful Behavior Health Manager, Travon Alexander. She's going to be doing the presentation this evening, so I'll bring her up to the podium. Oh, okay, I have the power.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Bedell and board members. My name's Travon Alexander. I am the Behavior Health, uh, Manager with Kansas City Public Schools and I'm going to talk to you guys tonight, since I have the power, I'mma flip the slides, tonight about the amazing work that our team of licensed social workers and professional counselors are doing, not only to meet but exceed our strategic plan performance indicator to increase the quality. Thank you. To increase, um, the quality and access to quality behavioral supports and emotional services out to our students in Kansas City Public Schools. Uh, we've talked about this just a number of times, but just a quick review. Um, if you guys recall, a timeline of our trauma team, starting with school year 18, we've expanded our team each year. Currently, we've gone from six clinicians to 19 clinicians. We've also maintained our community partnerships, specifically with Maddy Rhodes. As you can see, they serve, they provide on-school services for the schools listed, um, which helps us to meet socio-emotional learning needs and cultural needs specifically for those schools. These ongoing efforts helps us achieve our key indicators. This is just a slide for some data for you guys to see, starting with school year 18 through our current school year, the number of interventions that our clinicians have been able to provide to our students and families. Um, the blue, of course, you guys can see that, from school year 18 through school year 21, in each category, we are already exceeding what we have provided before. Um, students served, if you can look at that, is just even to where we were last year and we still have a quarter left to go. Uh, families served, as you can imagine, because of the impact of COVID-19, we've definitely provided more family services than we have in the past and that shows in the data. Also, COVID-19, um, kind of really tasked us to change the way that we provided support and services to our students and families. We wanted to make sure not only quality services were available, but also accessible. So some of the things and strategies we put in place during the COVID, um, pandemic and response to it, to make sure we were still providing those services, was provided COVID hotline numbers for each of our clinicians directly related to each school. We also implemented Theralink, which is a HIPAA compliant telehealth platform, which allowed us to use video support to provide the one-on-one support to students in their home during distance and virtual learning. We extended clinician hours, um, ensuring clinicians were available outside of school hours for families who worked during the school day. We could make contact with students and also their parents when they were in the home or caregivers. And also this year, our team began, um, really taking charge of the school relay application, which is an online platform that ensured safety of students in virtual and distance learning settings. Here is the data for our safety alert, which are results from the school relay system. So whenever a student uses a district issued device, um, either searching something or using a chat and there is a risk of self-harm, we automatically get an alert to our leadership team. We immediately look at it, assess the situation and assign it to a clinician to ensure the safety of that student through an assessment, a safety assessment. As you can see, we began using this system, our team, in September of 20 and through last month's data, February 21, when we began using it, we were receiving a lot of alerts. Uh, but as you can see, that number has gone down. We think that is definitely, there are several factors, but at the interventions that our team has employed as we get these alerts, as far as providing socio-emotional learning, how to openly communicate feelings and emotions that are overwhelming and also prove, prove implementing groups, um, to address safety alerts and self-harming behaviors, in addition to the one-to-one, um, interventions being provided. Here is a slide that you guys are going to need bifocals to see, but what we wanted to make sure you guys were aware of is the type of interventions that our team provide, which is a big, a really large scope of services. From our one-on-one interventions to families to, you know, linkage to community resources and home visits. What you'll notice in this data is as we re-entered school, school reopening with the first wave of trans-, students transitioning in February, you'll see some of the interventions go up. For instance, the one-to-one interventions, um, directly with our students have increased and that's directly related to our students being on-site and us having that direct engagement with our students, while other interventions are decreasing. As we're able to engage with our students, be with them in person, continue to strengthen those relationships, we, we, we feel that we will see a lot of our intervention numbers Speaking of school re-entry, um, one of the things we really want to communicate tonight is what our team of clinicians are seeing as we re-enter our school sites. Um, what we are seeing is anxiety a little bit from both our, our educators and also our students. Um, with the transitioning back into school, right? We think about what students are like after one summer. We've been out of school for maybe four summers now. So just that transition, getting back into a new routine, some being around other students when they haven't been for such a long time, um, just causes a little bit of anxiety. Um, depression about what does it look like next? Where am I with my academics? Do I really understand what's needed from me? Decreased attention span, particularly for our K through eight, right? They've come in from in, um, in-home and virtual distance learning. And so coming back into the classroom, sitting in a chair, being focused, has been a little bit of a struggle, which also contributes to the increased one-to-one. Other factors that we're seeing as students, um, transition back into our schools that, um, our clinicians are really focusing on is mobility concerns, um, as well, that prevents wellness and prevent academic success. Um, that includes housing instability. We're doing a lot more family services to ensure that our families have stable housing or linking to resources for, um, housing and rental assistance. So some of the interventions that we actually planned for and implemented in preparation for the reopening for our educators, because we know without educators, self-regulation, there can be no co-regulation and no SEL learning can occur. Without SEL learning, there's no academic learning, right? So for our educators, we've created safe spaces. We want our educators to feel safe and connected as well, where they can get away and kind of get their feelings together, relax and manage their emotions. Um, we also want them to feel supported from a clinical perspective, where if there is a crisis that presents, then we can provide brief crisis intervention and then we can link to ongoing services such as our EAP services or other community services. And then we also provide ongoing professional development for our educators. We just recently did a two-hour self-care for educators training, um, district-wide, three of our clinicians on our team who did an amazing job with that because that's super important. For our students, we developed a socio-emotional learning screener, an SEL screener, so that when students are dysregulated, then when we engage them and we assess, we know where, what's happening and what area to provide an intervention. The screener assesses physical health, um, environmental health, relationships, academic barriers and also social barriers, so that we can kind of know which area to hone in on. Uh, we are encouraging and providing, um, age-appropriate, trauma-informed strategies for emotional regulation. I just facilitated a trauma meeting with Faxton Elementary School and all of their students are developing safety plans such as this one. So when I get up and get ready to speak in front of the board and I'm getting overly stressed or overwhelmed, I refer to my safety plan and it helps me, um, become regulated. We also are focusing our discipline on restoring and repairing versus punitive and we are really focusing on that one-on-one student intervention, our clinicians are. All this is, is really guided, this work, by the Missouri Model for Trauma-Informed Schools, which is the trauma-informed framework that we have adopted. And if you look to the left of the screen, the theory of change is pretty clear. Changes in knowledge leads all the way through practice changes, cultural changes and als- and ultimately systemic changes. The Missouri Model is our framework that we are using to guide our work and it was also the framework used to develop our strategic plan. Up here is our strategic plan for your plan. We are in year one, transitioning into year two. Well, trauma awareness was all about educating, informing our educators and our staff about trauma, its impact, and then also becoming trauma-sensitive. It's like now that we know that, like what do we need to do to create safe, connected, welcoming spaces for our students where we can optimize the learning? So that's where we are now. We have training bundles that specifically address these, starting with our Discipline That Restores training and then transitioning into our Applied Restorative Practices. So basically, the discipline that restores is the theory of what trauma is and how it impacts us. The Applied Restorative Practices teaches our educators how to take that theory and that learning and apply it in the classroom setting. This is a brief timeline. All, when I think about everything that we've done and I see it just here, it's like, man, it doesn't look like very much. But from December of 19 to current, we have done a ton of work to move our district toward becoming a model trauma-informed school district. We've adopted the Missouri Model. We have identified school teams at each school site, which are led by clinicians. Those school teams in, include staff across levels, so administrative, teachers, everyone that's a part of that school team across all levels. We also attended a trauma kickoff meeting with a number of school teams, 13 school teams, I believe, and then we kind of rolled out our trauma training, which includes the Discipline That Restores and re-applied practices. We began in November of 2020. We had equity meetings with each of our schools, using the equity data to identify where your school was on our trauma-informed scale based on the Missouri Model and what needs to happen to move them through each stage. And we have had ongoing meetings, monthly meetings with each school's trauma teams to kind of identify where they are on the rating in each indicator, what needs to happen to get them to the next rating and where they are. This is just a quick slide to, again, a visual of our journey and the dates aren't on here or not on here, so I'll share them with you. On the left is where we were as it relates to the trauma training, Discipline That Restores, when I presented last in December of 2020, when we only had about 30% of our school teams who completed the training. As of current, um, we have 55% of our school teams who have completed the initial, initial Discipline That Restores training. And we plan to have all schools trained by the end of this school year, offering multiple opportunities, including some in Teachers Institute. And that's what I have for you guys tonight. What questions do you have for me? Thank you guys so much.
Hold at this. So there we go. Thanks Rita for sending those vibes my way. It's amazing because I can remember a time when I think we had fewer actually than six social workers. I can remember a time when we probably had only two or three. And so it's incredible to see what you've been able to do, so, um, congratulations. Uh, I think, um, Dr. Jones has a question, so I'll turn it to her and then Mr. Barca.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Alexander. Um, I have a question. So anytime we talk about a cultural change, you know, you working through awareness and all the, the stages that you clearly laid out, um, there is always a question of like uptake. And so what I wonder when I see this, you know, this great presentation is, to what is, how do y'all balance? How, how does administration balance giving people the autonomy to, uh, so building leaders, the autonomy to take on, um, the suggested strategies or, um, the trauma that restores, not beyond just the training, but the actual practices or programs? How do you, um, give them the autonomy to pick and choose, but also, you know, do you mandate some things? How do we, how do we see that we're going to move through these stages, uh, with adoption of actual strategies? Um, and what, to what extent have you seen that kind of uptake?
So absolutely. So part of being trauma-informed is being flexible and having everyone have a, a part of the ownership process, because then it's more impactful, which is why we, we really like to see all levels on the trauma teams. What we do is we use the model and they have those trauma team meetings where school leadership is present. But one of those meetings each month, either my, either myself or Dr. Woodley or our consultant that we consult with through, um, Alive and Well Communities attends the meeting so we can provide that feedback and that insight. So you have that objective person coming in and saying, hey, that's a great idea. Have you thought about this or what about this suggestion? We also have a consistent documentation form that each of the clinicians submit as evidence. So I'm reviewing those as they come in. After each meeting and they submit those forms, I'm reviewing those and making sure we're taking steps to get the schools to those next level. We have the, the definition of what it looks like. How we get there is going to look different for each schools because of the culture and climate of each school.
And let me just add on to that because to your point, um, you have what is in some cases, uh, called earned autonomy. And we think that there are people that, that we believe regardless of that they're going to do the right thing and then there are others where we, we do have to direct, like this is something that's important. But we do want, uh, as we talk about the initiatives we want to push out into schools, we talk as a cabinet and, and there are times where we will say, like, this is mandatory or this is optional. So I think there are some things where we have to do because we have to do it system-wide and there are others where we will allow for autonomy to decide on.
Mr. Barca?
Yeah, um, a- as a student of educational learning, I, I just want to commend you all. Yeah, as a student of educational learning, I just want to commend you all, Dr. Bedell. This is incredible to realize that through all the transition of the individuals in many places, this plan has stuck, and it is, it is moving forward in such a dramatic way and has such impact. And I think this is a testament to strong leadership and stability and focused intent to make sure this is a priority for the district. So just kudos to you all for maintaining this process.
Thank you. Ms. Cortez?
So one of the things you talked about, and I would echo my colleagues' comments, this is really exciting. And one of the, one of the, my question really is, are there tools or strategies that you otherwise would not have thought, adopted, that came about because of the pandemic and the remote learning, that you'd like to see continued, even though they weren't part of your original strategy?
Absolutely. So for instance, the first thing that comes to mind is TheraLink, our telehealth platform. I don't think we ever would have thought about investing in, in that type of system had COVID-19 not presented. Another thing that really helps us, just in general, is the use of technology. So like, when we are expressing feelings, we have jam boards that we can use now instead of cards or just a feelings box. We have jam boards. We have emoji rooms that really kind of engage the students, particularly the littles, as I call them, our K through A students. So there are a number of strategies and tools that we've really thought outside of the box and kind of went to the research and the literature that have, that's come out as a result of COVID-19, and really looked and see, how can we implement this into the work that we're doing? It's been really helpful in our online groups as well. Like I mentioned, as part of the safety alerts, having those support groups and keeping them engaged and keeping them attending, to have them present.
Awesome, thank you.
You know, I, I had one question about the, I'm really fascinated about the TheraLink telehealth platform. There's been a lot of discussion, because the federal government had eased some of the restrictions on the use of telehealth for delivery of health and mental health care. Are we able to access additional reimbursement? Or are we finding that that ease of restrictions that has been in place during COVID has assisted us in utilization of the telehealth services?
So I'm going to answer this, and Dr. Woodley's right behind me. So if I say something wrong, she's going to tap me on my shoulder.
Okay, we'll watch.
To my understanding, at this point in time, we're not being reimbursed. We are using grant funds as an intervention to cover the cost of our telehealth services. And what was the other part of your question?
Well, I didn't, you know, I know there's been a national, it's been allowed nationally through federal regs, and I didn't know if that was giving us additional resources for reimbursement for use of telehealth.
Okay, I'm not sure about that. I was just focused on implementation with fidelity with our students and families, so I'm a.
Yeah, so the, so we have been exploring the ability to bill for our services, but because we have, a majority of our clinicians are funded through VOKA, we're not able to double-dip with the federal implementations of funds. So we had to hold off on that at this time.
Thank you.
And just, just a reminder for people, the VOKA is the Victim of Crimes Act grant. And it is, I think it was 3.2.
3.5 billion.
3.5 million. It's one of the largest districts, one of the largest grants we were awarded as a school district, and it was a grant that we went after. And so that grant was awarded probably shortly before we went into COVID-19. So we are able to do a lot of this work because of that grant. And ultimately, as we go through Blueprint 2030, you know, we have a responsibility here to figure out, how do we make sure that these things we're doing will be sustainable outside of the need for grant funding? Because we think that this all could, if you can address the social and emotional deficits that some of our kids make sure, or even adults within our community that work with our kids, they will no longer then become impediments to them fulfilling their academic goals in life. It's just that simple. So this work is important.
Thank you. All right. I am not seeing any more questions, but I'm taking a quick look to be sure. Okay, well, thank you, Dr. Bedell. Thank you, Dr. Woodley. And Ms. Alexander, thank you so much for your presentation this evening. So, Dr. Bedell, I believe we have some business items you want to reference for April 28.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the items that we will ask the board to take action on is our cyber liability insurance policy renewal. We will come to the board to take action on quality roofing, Central High School in the BOE, for $379,000. We will ask the board PuroZone custodial contract for $237,105.79. And then the other item that we will ask the board to take action on is the Tico Productions contract.
All right, thank you, Dr. Bedell. That concludes all of the discussion for tonight. I would like to make sure that everyone here and who's joined us via livestream knows that there will be a special meeting held at 6:00 PM tomorrow, April 15, and that will be the installation of new Board of Directors and the reorganization meeting. So that meeting will be held here, but it will be livestreamed for those who want to join us online. We're looking forward to tomorrow evening, so please join us if you are interested. And with that, we are now adjourned. Thank you very much.